With liberty and justice for all. Want to thank you all for being here. I know these are really trying times and appreciate you taking the time to to be here. We have no audience, but it goes without saying if anybody has any questions, please shoot us an email and we'll answer them as fast as we can. Let's move right along and do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, and a second? Okay, we've moved in second and all those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Okay, that passes. Okay, thank you. And the consent agenda, can we have a motion there, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Already, thank you. A second? Okay, it's been moved in second and David? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we've got that one already. Thank you very much. We have no special presentations. Okay, moving right along. Approve the MOU Comprehensive Distance Learning Fall 2020. We need a motion on that, don't we?
We do need it.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve that, please?
I'm okay. Oh, you got one, sorry.
Yeah, it's been moved. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Mike, you want to say anything about that before we?
I just, I want to say that I really enjoyed collaborating with OEA and our CEA to develop this memorandum. These are some trying times. We're all growing and learning with this online learning form. But our teachers are second to none. They are really getting after it. They did last spring. So we had to have some agreements about our operations and our expectations. And so we collaborated and developed this. I did get legal input. And advice, so everything is pretty squared away with this as far as I can see.
Already, is there any questions out there? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we're good to go. Thank you very much. Okay, discussion. Board evaluation. Tool, that's with the personal evaluation and then evaluate ourselves as a group. And then also the question we have is before we gave it to several people to evaluate us from the, not really the outside, but the principals and various people. Are you guys okay with that? And if you are, I mean, who would you think would be appropriate to make sure they get a copy of the the evaluation?
I think the same as in previous.
Candace, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, I just think the same as we've done in previous, the administrators and I mean, I don't, I don't have an opinion to change it.
Lacey?
I was just gonna ask a question. Do we want to talk about the tool itself first or the audience first? Just so I can kind of follow along and keep track. So since we're on the on the topic of the audience in terms of who we want to send the group board evaluation to. For ones that didn't, for our board members that didn't do this last year, what Candace was referring to was the administrators, which would also include Joel and Anna and potentially the vice principal at the high school as they're normally one sitting there with us during our board meetings, providing support and interacting with us. So the intent would be to get feedback from those that typically work with us. So Candace, is that the kind of the right description when you said the ones we've done before?
Yes.
Okay.
If I'm hearing that right, then it's, we're, you're including all the administrators of the building level, correct? With the exception of the elementary assistant principal, because I we, I don't know if that was included last year when we started this process.
I, I don't think it was because I don't think we had that position, because I think maybe that year before, the evaluation was sent out, I think in June at the end of the school year. So it, that would be a great addition. We would certainly want to be consistent across schools.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the group tool, the, the group survey will be sent out to that audience as well. And then there will be a self-evaluation part, which clearly we will just fill out for our own, like our own reflection of our performance. And I, I can't pull up the tool itself right now because I'm having some technical difficulties. But when you're looking at it, is there feedback either for the group questions or the self-reflection questions? Do we want to change those? Did they seem clear enough? Do we need to edit any of those questions to add clarity? What are the thoughts on that?
I don't see it attached to this month's meeting.
Oh.
I do think it was last month though, wasn't it?
Yeah, it, it's not on this month's attachment, but you're right, it was on last month.
Okay.
I'll go, I'll look at it.
Okay. Mark, did you have any chance to look at that tool, the evaluation questions from last month? And did you have any input? You would be a fresh set of eyes for us that I'd be interested in, in knowing whether they were self-explanatory.
A fresh set of eyes that absolutely and completely utterly forgot. Sorry. You said something that I went, oh crap, I had homework and I completely forgot. So I dropped the ball on that one.
Lacey, didn't we? My intent was not to put you on the spot.
Hey, if I screw up, I'm willing to admit it. So, oh well.
Lacey, didn't we? Didn't we upgrade those or change those a little bit the last time we went through this after we got the evaluations?
Well, Candace, correct me if I'm wrong from your memory. I, when we started that, when we started using this tool several years ago, they were really long and some of the questions had just slight changes, but they were slightly different. And then we went through and we tried to take out the main duplicative ones to shorten it up. And so I think last year and the year before it was consistent.
Yeah, the last two years I've been on the board, it's been the same set of questions. And there's only 23. I mean, there's not that many. I don't, I'll be honest, I, I haven't read them very closely again this year, but I don't remember last year having any issues with them.
Got it. Okay, and I, I see that we.
I was gonna say, I'm the, I'm the one that creates that instrument. And so you guys give me that feedback and I don't recall any feedback last year about changing the questions.
Yeah.
I normally get that feedback and incorporate that in, and I did not get any last year.
Okay, that's great. And I see that we have Ashley. I had to switch my screen to see everybody. I see that Ashley was able to join us. I'm glad you're here. Ashley, did you have any question or any questions or thoughts on either the group questions or the self-reflection ones?
I do not, no.
Okay. Okay, so what I'm hearing is to move forward with the same set of questions that we had used last year? I'm seeing Ashley and Candace now. I'm scrolling my screen to see Mark. Okay. And David, you're good? Oh, did I lose David off of my screen?
I don't see him.
Okay. Okay, maybe he got dropped off. Okay, Mike, I think we have at least enough of us indicating that the same set of questions is fine. So we'll move forward with that tool.
Oh, Dave just said his wifi dropped. He's trying to log back on.
Okay.
Mike? Yeah? It was a discussion action item. So are you going to take action or is this going to be consensus?
I was just gonna ask a question. If we could just, since we've got a consensus, can we just go with that and then get a copy of that? Give us all a let us go to work on it?
I don't believe we need to take action in order to send the tool out and begin the process. I think our action is when we get the results back, we have to accept that evaluation into the record. So I think we can move forward with just a discussion and consensus.
Okay, then Marilyn, can you get us all a copy of that, both sets of the questions in, in the next week or two or so?
I think Joel.
And let us go through them.
I think the process is that Joel will be sending those.
Yeah, thank you, Lacey. That's, it is actually. So Mike, if you want me to do that, I can do that. I, I do need to know, to create the instrument, I basically take a copy of last year's survey, enter it to this one. But one of the parameters it asks me for is a timeline for tentative completion. I can put that out as far as you would like. If you had an estimate for me, if you want three weeks from now, four weeks from now, it's just a parameter of the survey.
I would, I would think in the next week or two would be, would be good.
Oh, next week or two to have it completed? I'm, I can send it out.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I'd say maybe in the next 30 days to get it completed.
Okay, I'll have it to you and then I'll have it to you in the next, within the next, well, as early as as Monday of next week, and then I'll have it set to not be open for at least 30 days.
Okay. Okay. All righty. Moving right along, superintendent evaluation timeline. Mike, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so I submitted to you the evaluation process, or at least my proposed, my evaluation process, and the evaluation timeline to complete that process. And so the process begins with a self-evaluation. If this is okay with you and you approve this as a board, then I will submit my self-evaluation prior to the next board meeting. And then we'll set the dates for the consecutive benchmarks as appropriate, if you like, at that meeting. I also included, or inadvertently didn't include my evaluation goals and rubric. But I did send it to you via email. If we had a meeting in person, I would have brought that and handed it out to you for you to take a look at it. These are the, the national superintendent standards that I've included here and my goals that would be in relation to the standards for me for a superintendent. I can read them aloud if you like, or if you're having a problem finding them on your emails. We can figure something else out, but they're the same standards that you evaluated me on this past year.
Is this it, Mike? I wonder if you can see it?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I believe this information is helpful for us to make sure we have an agreement with Mike on what timeline and the process that we're going to use throughout the year. I don't think we have an action tonight. So unless anyone has a different thought or would like to propose something different about what we're going to do with the time or the process, I'd speak up now. Otherwise, we'll assume that this proposal becomes our agreement with Mike.
I'm fine with the proposal. I'm just wondering, at least on the document I have, it doesn't have dates associated with the timeline. Do we need to, we don't have to necessarily do it tonight, but is there a point where we need to take action on the dates associated with the timeline?
Yeah, so. Go ahead, Lacey.
I, because I can't see the document, I was gonna ask whether, if it has months in there. Like, I don't, I don't, I don't need the actual date of the month to move forward, but I would love to be able to know like, oh, this is the month we're gonna take this action or we need to do this step?
Yeah, agreed.
So it, it does have one date on the document where we backwards map the other dates for each of those activities. So the date where I'm notified of my contract extension or non-extension is March 15.
Right.
So we complete the process by March 15. The process starts with my self-evaluation, which I can have prepared for you by the next meeting. And then we then set the interim progress date, but I do those monthly anyway. I always have for you. So I give you monthly updates on my progress. That, that was my choice to do that. So we can include that in there as ongoing or however you want with the dates, but we can set those things after or at the next board meeting.
Okay, I, I, I agree with Lacey. I would like us to, I'm okay with months. I don't need specific dates, but I get a little lost in the process when I don't know when the next step is coming up.
I will remind every month. I'll remind you of the next.
Thank you.
Could we do that then, Mike? Have the, you do that for next month and then we just take a minute or two and we can map it out and we'll have it set up then.
Okay.
Okay. All righty. Okay, any other questions? Moving right along, board training. Mike, do you want to talk about that when? What that is and when that's coming up?
Yeah, so we, we got to talking about board training and OSBA and those training hours. And then we discussed what board training the board might need. And the only one that is required of the board, that board, that's a new requirement, is the mandatory reporting training. And I sent you all a video that defines the responsibilities of board members. But then we have what's called safe schools training that are online. And an online safe schools training for mandatory reporters takes about 20 minutes. It's, it's a 20-minute teach-to and assessment thing that you take and assessment at the end that demonstrates you understand the responsibilities of mandatory reporting. The other one was on sexual harassment, which is not required for you. But we do have it in safe schools as well if you wanted to, to participate in that one. I just, those were the two that I, one is required and the other one may or may not be pertinent. It depends on what you want to do with that one. So I catch that, Mike and Lacey?
Yes, thank you. The other thing is we had asked OSBA to extend our extend the deadline for the six, the six hours that we had remaining. And they wouldn't. Mike pushed back a little bit and they still wouldn't. So we do not have any more hours of training unless we want to pay for the individual trainings each time. So I'm disappointed with that, but that is where we're standing with that.
So if you want to move forward with the safe schools training around mandatory reporting, I can have Joel set that up for you. And he'll send it out to you in your email. And then you'll have a window to complete that. It'll be, I think, October 30th is our deadline or something like that. You can have a deadline, whatever you want on it. But we can send that out to you. And then I also sent you the video from PACE. That's our insurance carrier and OSBA's legal advisors. And they can, and you, you can view that to get some more information around that, that law. Okay?
Okay. We have Joel, just go ahead and do that then and.
Are you at all interested in the safe school sexual harassment? Procedures, sexual harassment procedures?
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Okay, Joe, we'll send them both out to them then. Okay. Unless anybody has an objection, I didn't see what everybody wanted there. Or Mike, are you gonna ask them or?
Is everybody okay with the sexual harassment along with the other one? Mark, you're okay?
I think it would be important for us to do.
I think we ought to see them both. I really do. Yeah, I'd say go ahead and set those up and, and we take a look at those. Any other ideas on board training or anything that you guys are specifically interested in besides these?
I do have a question. Not so much about board training. So the board evaluation that I dropped the ball on, did I hear correctly that Joel's going to, somebody is going to send those, send that evaluation to us an email?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, unless we have any other questions on the board training. Let's go on to the OSBA convention.
Mike?
Did I hear a question or? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. This is Lacey. I just wanted to check in. Last month, when we were hoping that we would still have some free hours of training from OSBA, there was a comment made around a training on operating agreements. And so I wanted to check in whether we should follow up with like, kind of the, the outline of what a training like that would look like and would cost and bring that back. I don't want to neglect that as a topic if we are interested in that. Or if we want to hold off and wait for the spring, we've got enough to do right now. So I just want to make sure I'm closing the loop on that comment.
I personally would like us to talk about operating agreements at some point. It's definitely not the most, to your point, spring is fine. It's not the most pertinent or most important thing to talk about right now, but I think it is important for us to have in the future.
Okay, so why don't we at least reach out to OSBA and ask them if they can send us maybe an outline of what the training covers, kind of like a syllabus and a cost? And then we can continue this discussion next month?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah, Lacey, I'll get ahold of Vincent in the next couple of days and I'll get that information. We'll have it.
Thank you.
All righty. The OSBA convention is coming up, what's that, November 14? And that's all virtual. So if you haven't already, let Marilyn know if you want to be part of that. And we understand that there's what a main meeting and then there's several satellite meetings that we can get into. But if you are, definitely get ahold of Marilyn. Marilyn, what's the date? We're supposed to have all that turned in?
Registration starts November, or so, sorry, September 14.
Okay.
Can we just, can we just raise our hands now if we know that we are interested so that Marilyn gets the information tonight?
Sure.
So what Marilyn will be registering us for if we raise our hands right now is a one-day virtual training for our OSBA convention. So if you're wanting Marilyn to register, please raise your hand.
Marilyn?
Go ahead, Mike.
I want to take a look at that registration, Marilyn, to see if you know, that would be pertinent for me. I'm sure that, I just want to know what I'm looking at. I haven't yet.
They're going to have more information next week. Like schedules and sort of thing. So I'll let you know.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Mark, I don't see your hand raised. I don't mean to call you out, but I just want to make sure that we're not missing you. Are you wanting to attend?
Yes.
Okay. So Marilyn, in case you're trying to track, Lacey wants to go, Mark wants to go, Mike Anderson wants to go. I'm seeing Candace raising her hand and David. And Ashley, did we lose Ashley? Why am I not seeing her on my screen?
I don't see Ashley.
We lost Ashley.
Okay, so we need to follow up with both Ashley and Debbie.
And Debbie, yeah.
I will. I'll get in touch with them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, the trustee reports. In no particular order, Mark. Well, Lacey, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry. No, 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 I'm looking off of our notes because I don't have the, I can't pull up the agenda. So that was completely my bad. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mark, do you do anything exciting in the last month or so?
Oh, I am on.
Yeah.
Not particularly. So I've been involved with this Psych Armor Suicide Prevention for Veterans and we just got notified that they have signed on something called the President's Roadmap to Empower Veterans and End National Tragedy of Suicide. So that was, that was pretty cool. So they're getting more into the veteran suicide prevention. Other than reaching out and helping, especially helping my buddy, my shut-in vet buddy right now, because he, he's over in Thurston waiting to be evacuated. We're waiting for the word to be evacuated, but other than that, just stand alone.
Okay, David?
Not so involved with the district in the last month with the strange year we're having, but I would just say, extremely busy at Peace Health as we continue to secure and find substitute for PP supplies. Very proud of Peace Health, the way they've been generous in partnering with a lot of different facilities in the community. And we did start the incident command center again regarding the fires and how we can support and accommodate caregivers. We're getting out to meet all the new people at some point.
Okay, Lacey?
My main interaction over the past month has just been with, you know, a few dozen parents that call with questions and then Mike Johnson gets all of those texts from me going, I don't have the answer to this. I don't have the answer to this. So Mike, thanks so much for responding to my evening texts when I have a parent who's wanting, wanting some information. So you've been super helpful there. And then with my job with the City of Eugene, we have been busy with emergency response in one way or another. So I've been been plugging the hours there. So that's it for me.
Okay, Candace?
It's been fairly slow this month. I have been working on with Mike a little bit on Crystal Education Foundation. We have the, we've been working, maybe we should talk about the Wi-Fi Assistance Fund that we've been putting together. So my, as you guys remember, last month, Mike agreed or committed to, is that a good word, Mike? Donating to a Wi-Fi Assistance Fund. After some conversation, we it's found is probably best to go to be a Crystal Education Foundation program. So, and then we would then work with the school and help provide that assistance. That way people can use it in all kinds of ways, but it makes it kind of easy for the donation perspective that way. So Mike and I have been working on that. We have that fund all set up and ready to go and ready to accept dollars and pay out dollars as they come in. And then secondarily, we're working on a grant program right now for teachers and principals. So Crystal Education has some money set aside to provide support for, are we calling, what are we calling this?
BDL.
BDL, the Comprehensive Distance Learning. And hopefully we get some applications and soon we'll be awarding some grants to teachers to help supply, bring in supplies or whatnot for comprehensive distance learning. So that's what I've been working on this month.
Candace, a quick question for you. If you're going to send to put some funds in that Wi-Fi account, how do you do that? Where do you? Wi-Fi account, how do you do that? Where do you assume the check?
So the easiest way to do it is if you write a check, you can send it to our post office box, which is PO Box two oh six Crestwell, and then we will, if you just write Wi-Fi or Wi-Fi Assistance Program in the notes of the, in the memo, I will make sure it gets to the right fund.
Okay.
Hey Candace?
Yes.
I helped two years ago and I believe it's still active. Your page is still hosted through our page and we have a PayPal donation.
Yes.
Page, is that still active?
It's, I checked it this week and it's not linked right now, so I went to go check it out. So maybe you and I could talk and get that fixed, but at the moment it is not linked.
Copy that, I can help you with that.
Thank you, Joel.
So just um, uh, a little more info on donation. I got the post office box, but so this check is going to whom again?
Crestwell Education Foundation.
And then just put Wi-Fi Assistance in the notes?
Yep, and then we'll put it in the right fund and Mike and I or Anna and I or someone will work to, as they use money, they, they'll invoice us and we'll just use that fund to replenish the money that they've been utilizing.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Mike, Ashley just, Ashley just texted me and let me know that um, she did just get power back, but her Wi-Fi is going on and off as things are starting back up. So she will try to log in, but if it doesn't come back in time before the meeting, she knows to connect with Marilyn about her participation in the OSBA convention. So I just want to pass along her text to the group so that we all understand why she's not here.
Okay. Um, I went or I was virtually on a lean, lane ESD meeting. And other than that, uh, over the course of the month, several moms have talked to me about not homeschooling and putting their kids in the uh, virtual academy that Mike or tell me about. So that's, I would bet you that we're gonna pick up a lot of kids with that. I'm tickled to death you've got that set up, but other than that, it's been a I haven't really done much this last month. Okay, moving right along, any, uh, in the technology department, any questions for Joel?
I'm not sure if this question is appropriate for Joel or Mike, but I'll ask it now. Um, with our two days of distribution being canceled and maybe Fridays, because we don't know, what is the plan for either getting devices to kiddos? If we're gonna still start on Monday, how do we hold Monday if some kids don't have devices?
Right, so yeah, we have a tentative plan that begins tomorrow. And if things don't look right, we have Plan B that begins on Monday. So we'll be pushing things back a day. Uh, it looks like for getting classes started uh, due to the device distribution opportunities. Yeah, it's a day-by-day assessment. Uh, and we adjust the plans from day to day as well on how we're gonna get the distribution out.
So is the current plan that you're on that you will be able to distribute all the needed devices on Friday? For school to start on Monday?
We would be looking Friday and Monday to distribute the devices.
Okay.
We need.
And so what, what are kids doing if we start on Monday, but they don't have a device?
Well, go ahead, Joel.
Well, I was gonna say, one piece to keep in mind is the device distribution also included very important information from the classes, from their teachers, about their school day, packet information. And also this week was meant to, for teachers to reach out and, and touch base with their classes. So we're losing not just the distribution of devices, but we're losing the opportunity for staff to reach out to those students to make those connections about next week. So there's a lot of moving parts here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping to hear details on what, what do we tell parents who are asking these questions?
We have a plan.
I want to know the plan. I don't want to just be told that we have one.
Well, we're looking at two distribution times and maybe three. Um, we haven't talked about Saturday, but we may be, I'm gonna talk to the principals about that and see if we want. I'm not sure what the conditions are going to be because several of our staff are located in uh, Springfield, Eugene. And um, those that are in Springfield, they're having a difficult time out there right now. So um, you know, without them, we don't have our full complement rolling with us. And um, we have to see where they get containment on this fire. And that's why it's a day-to-day assessment. We don't know when they're going to en route that thing and, and, and prevent it from coming into into our community further. So hoping uh, that we know tomorrow, but um, I'm going to talk to the principals about seeing if we can make some arrangements to get some distribution going on on Saturday. And just pay people extra, extra duty compensation to come in to help do that.
Can I add something really fast? The principals have also been talking about backup plans as far as assignments and just kind of calming kids and families. So we have been in correspondence with families and through Google Classroom, most of the students like at the middle school know how to log into Google Classrooms and teachers are posting things in there, like, don't worry. Um, and then we plan on, like for instance, CMS, teachers created welcome back videos or slideshows. So typically those would go out to students via email and posted in Google Classroom. For students who can't access those, those will still be available. So we're trying to let people know that if they have a device, they can access this right now. But with that being said, no one's gonna be penalized or, you know, lose out for not being able to log in. We're gonna do our very best to get devices out um, and, and more information.
Great, thank you.
So, so can I ask, um, like I, I didn't, I didn't know any of that information and I'm, I think I'm on several distribution lists for the school. I haven't seen information that's telling students, go ahead and log into Google Classroom. Your teachers are trying to connect with you if you have a device. Um, if we're playing it day by day, does that mean we're playing it day by day with postponing the start of school? And I guess that's a question for you, Mike. Is that what you're thinking?
So in, in the welcome back letter, there was, that went to students, there were specifics. And then also, at least at CMS, the plan is if we cannot distribute by Friday morning, we want to send an all-call-out to students saying at the very least, login, make sure that, because the teachers actually sent invites to their Google Classroom pages. So students don't have to go searching for those pages, they just need to click the join. Um, and those went directly to students' emails. But prior to this meeting, that's why I was asking Joel. I actually made sure it worked for my own sixth grader. Um, and yes, those have gone out from all CMS teachers.
Okay, so I can tell parents, have your students log in. So one, if they have a device, have them log in, they'll get information. So far, we're not anticipating delaying school.
Trying to stay on it.
And we're, we're, okay, okay.
So.
Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
My question is then what about students if we are not able to get them devices before Monday? The start of school? What's, what's gonna happen with them? Because that's the question that I got earlier.
So here's the situation. We surveyed our families to determine how many we had to provide devices for. So we know who those families are and we can contact them directly and let them know that we have devices ready to pick up.
Okay.
His notice. The remainder of the students um, had devices or families indicated they had devices at home that they could get online with. The majority of our families, Joel, you can talk about the data, but the majority of our students have devices at home.
Okay.
And what was the data on that, Joel? Was it seventy, eighty percent or something already had devices and?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was close to seventy percent last spring that had devices and our survey was indicating similar numbers. We still were anticipating issuing out over eight hundred devices, but that was because a lot of that data also was reflecting parents recognizing they only had one device, but they had multiple children. And they were requesting, you know, a second device for their family and obviously we could support that and, and honor that and help them with that request. But a vast majority of our families said that they had a device, at least a device in their family or in their household to use.
So in prioritizing our distribution, because we still have devices on back order that have not come in. So in prioritizing distribution, the first calls that we'll make sure we call too. I mean, we'll put out a general thing saying that we're distributing, but the calls to the families that don't have a device would be the priority in our distribution.
Okay. Okay, awesome. So Friday morning, I'm hearing principals or at least Julie will be sending out an email on kind of what the plan is to catch parents up on devices and the information that was gonna be handed out on the distribution day?
Um, Lacey, we plan to, we're, we're, we're assessing it day by day and our plan for a Friday distribution is to have a plan in place and just, and the information out as close to three o'clock as possible. And the original schedule only had like a three-hour window on Friday. Obviously, that's not gonna work, so I could already anticipate that the Friday day could be a much longer day of distribution. Including a Saturday, that piece of the puzzle could help offset a quite a bit of a distribution need. So we have a lot of information, a lot of ability to get in, get the technology out both by expanding the hours on Friday and also including a Saturday distribution. And we could also look at a, a Monday distribution for those people who are the, who we didn't catch. Basically, Monday could end up being what Friday was meant to be. A catch-all for those very loose-in folks that just didn't, couldn't make it.
Okay, all right. I, thank you for letting me just continue to ask, ask my pointed questions around this. I just really want to make sure that I know what to tell parents, because there's a lot of them, you know, literally texting me as we speak. Can you figure out what we're doing? Because they're getting nervous and everything is changing. And so without an email that says, here's the backup plan. Um, so I, I just want to know what to tell them. So I appreciate you letting me ask.
Hey, any other questions?
I, I will say that in my report, I put some numbers out there about our Facebook page and you saw that in just three days, uh, the Facebook post that referenced our food distribution start point garnered like just in a three-day period, and we're past that three-day period now. So I looked this morning, we're at three thousand people reached by that one single bit of information. So it's a pretty powerful way to get information out there. I guess I'm referencing that because it late, it loops back to what you were describing, Lacey. Is that we have some tools available to us to get the word out about our distribution and changes and plans and everything, and we'll utilize those tools to make sure people are informed.
Great, thank you.
And what, I have one more question regarding the uh, so we've got a fund set up. How, how is that going to work? Is, is, are people gonna be able to come to the school and say, hey, I need money to get internet access? How, how's that? How's that whole thing gonna work?
So we have a survey that's out there. Uh, right now, we put it out a week ago. I believe it was at the beginning of last week. And we were asking parents who, or our community, um, who needs assistance, financial assistance uh, with the internet and who is rural uh, too far out there remotely that cannot get access to service? So that we can figure out how to accommodate both. Those are barriers. So we got the hotspots that we're looking at. Joel ordered two hundred of them. Uh, that's the number we decided we wanted was two hundred. The number we absolutely have to have to get started, we figured was right at about fifty of those hotspots. And so we, we'll get those accounted for with the survey and then those that are too far remote to access internet service, period. Then we're gonna work with them to set up a site where they can come in and get service here within the district or uh, if somehow we can get them close enough to a cellphone tower where we can get them on the cellphone. But that, we know who we're working with on that.
Cool. So um, um, one of my wife's former teaching partner stopped by. Excuse me, one of the things that Springfield did was they set up these hotspots on buses and then parked the buses out in the neighborhoods. Is, is that a viable option in, where, where are we going to put our hotspots at?
In each household.
Oh, you're gonna put a, a hotspot in the actual household?
Yes.
Okay, better yet, thank you.
And at the end of three months, if we're still in CDL, then we'll go another three months.
Okay. Cool. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Amy's had her hand up for a while, so I just want to make sure she gets a chance to talk. Amy, hi.
Oh.
Uh, well, I just wanted to say, I don't know, I feel pretty confident I can speak for Jenny and Julie, but I would just encourage any parent questions or, you know, questions about things we're doing. I would love for them to feel like they could contact us building principals as well. Um, we're, three of us are gonna go out of our way to really align our communications. We're constantly testing and communicating that we're sending out, you know, pretty solid communication across all three buildings. So um, if Julie's sending out an email, chances are Jenny and I will be sending out a very similar message. And so if you're hearing a lot of questions, it'd be great for us to know, because obviously there's questions out there. Um, and I just would encourage um, you guys to just, you know, also encourage them to reach out to us principals so we can directly address those if it comes up.
Do you guys want them directed to your office? Number, like the office number, someone's monitoring that? With working from home or not, I was reluctant to send them to a voicemail that may sit there.
But email.
Or is email the best way to reach? Okay, email is the best?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Our office lines are being answered throughout the regular business hours and if for some reason we aren't there and our secretaries would take those messages, but email direct line to us.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Uh, any?
I just, I just want to say it's wonderful to sit in a Zoom meeting and, and hear three building administrators say they're all in alignment and gonna send out messaging. And all I hear is K through twelve and I find it quite refreshing. And I look so forward to meeting all three of you, but I love hearing alignment and consistent messaging. I think it helps, it's helpful to, to everybody. You guys are great and I don't even know you.
David, you ought to go by and meet them. I did a week ago or so and, and uh, I really enjoyed the meeting time. It was great.
Oh, Mike, you know I will be. I'm the grandpa of the group, ladies.
But not the oldest. Anyway, uh, moving right along to transportation, any questions there? And I can't see everybody on my screen, so yell out if I don't call your name, all right? Uh, moving right along, special services, any questions for Amy?
Um, Mike, would you like Amy to give a, a quick overview of things that are happening in her area?
Yeah, if, if you wouldn't mind, could you give us a, a two-minute kind of a, a, an idea of what's happened this week? How things are going?
Yep, I would, I would love to. So um, special services, so we're looking at not only special education, but how just in general, we're supporting students. So each team, each um, at each school has been meeting throughout the last couple of weeks to just talk about how to best serve students. So in terms of special education, we've been So in terms of special education, we've been reviewing IEPs to look at goals, services. How does that align with what we're offering right now? How do we need to, to possibly accommodate those students? And or look at how we're accommodating even the IEP and making adjustments there. Additionally, we're looking at language, our, our English language learners and, and figuring out ways to best accommodate those students and, and best support them. And so looking at class schedules, adjusting teacher schedules in, in order to best work with. Now our comprehensive distance learning routines, but also how that will look as we hopefully soon roll out hybrid and then in person later on this year. That's the hope and goal. And so best working with that schedule as well. Family supports, again, looking, we have, Catherine is doing an amazing job of, of, of reaching out to families. And, and, and hearing the needs that they have in terms of supplies, supports that are needed, and then accommodating that. So hopefully tomorrow, maybe the next day, we'll, we'll get an opportunity to, to reach out to families in terms of getting them, them the supplies that they need to be successful this school year. So a variety of supports, but really trying to hear the needs of the community. And, and I would echo if there, if you're hearing other needs, responses from the community, please feel free to email. We, we would love to hear that and try to do our best to support those, those services and needs that families have.
And also we added some days to Dom Reese. Right?
Yeah, so, so Dom Reese, our homeless liaison, has been working with families. If, if they're displaced, if they are, are doubled up with another family, if they're indeed homeless, then she's, she's working to support those needs of those families as well.
So we added ten extra days to her assignment before school so that she could, you know, initiate contact with those families to start resolving some of their, their needs and, and barriers.
I think that's great, Mike. Thank you for, for doing that. Are there some needs that she's running into with families that she doesn't have a resource to help fill?
I haven't heard of anything specific. Team, let me know if, if you have heard otherwise. That being said, her and Catherine work very closely and they, they support each other very well in terms of finding the resources and getting families in touch. Yeah.
And, and if that, if they're not finding it within their resources, Amy has direct, she has a direct line to Mr. Doug Allison. And then Big Doug reserves. So she's, she's got the, got the hookup there.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, any other questions or? If not, let's move along to the elementary. Amy, are you out there?
I'm here.
Have you been having fun this week?
We have. It's been awesome having staff physically joining us in the building. We've also had a number of folks joining us virtually through Zoom. And we've focused a lot of our professional learning this week around CSO, which is our new platform. As opposed to using Google Classroom, it's a little more friendlier for younger students. And so teachers have been deep in the weeds, learning this new platform. We also have been giving ourselves some refreshers on Zoom and practicing using the breakout room features and getting ourselves set up to have a schedule. Our schedule allows for us to have small group instruction. So teachers have been practicing how to navigate that piece. And our classified staff arrived today, which was lovely to have them back in the building. We've focused a lot of our trainings on safety procedures. Christie, who's no longer on here, has really taken the reins by doing a lot of research and helping to set up the safety protocols for not only our school, but our district. And yeah, there's a lot of preparations, lesson planning. The CDL is going to really require a high level of collaboration. So our teachers are already navigating how to organize themselves and to take the opportunity to, you know, divvy up the duties and responsibilities. Our next task is going to be to start developing those assessments at the start of the year and how we assess over the screen. That'll be fun with five year olds, but we're going to figure it out. So we can properly place them into academic groups so we can begin the business of teaching and learning. Trying to think of what else to cover. Am I missing anything, Mike?
Yeah, so all staff have been involved in the CDL playbook for best practices for instruction online. And then also the Acelis training.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. All, we're learning a lot of new things at the elementary school. We're also, we haven't started this yet, but we're also going to be transitioning into using TAC for our grading and reporting out to families rather than using other documents. So the teachers are going to be learning quite a bit of new tech this fall.
So for, for the board that doesn't know this, when Amy came on board, the secondary level schools were using TAC for their grade reporting system. However, the elementary school had maybe a few different grading systems to report out grades and things, five, six, something like that. And now consistently district-wide, K twelve will be using the TAC system for grade reporting.
Yeah, and it'll be a lot more consistent and also a place to store a digital copy of grades. Up until this year, teachers in grade level teams had created Google Docs or Word documents and have just saved copies digitally on their hard drives. So we will actually have their grades stored in the TAC system, which will travel on with them throughout their education across well. So that'll be a good improvement for us, that's for sure.
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Any questions at all? Any questions out there? Thank you very, very much. Julie? I bet you've had a lot of fun this week.
Yes, we're having a great time. The training is very similar because we are going district-wide. I have been so impressed with my staff members as far as the time and effort they're putting in. I'm super big on alignment within the school so that kids and parents have a clear understanding of the expectations of what it means to be a middle schooler. So my staff has worked hard to create a school-wide organizer that will be presented to students during homeroom, which basically will be like a planner. It's similar to a tool that's used in Avid and, and basically each teacher has committed to starting their class or ending their class with that planner, and students will be filling out their individual planner and submitting those weekly. And those are one, to get them used to using a planner and staying organized, but also a tool for parents so that parents can check and see what is it that my child worked on today? And can expect their child to be filling out that planner with their teacher. So we're hoping that's a tool that families appreciate. I know as a parent at my former site, I really appreciated that because I could better support my kiddo. Another thing that we're working on is aligning how we grade. That is still a work in progress, but we had some great conversations about expectations and, and really focusing, nobody wants a student to fail. And so focusing on creating an environment in which it's, it's almost impossible to fail. And not that we're going to go easy on any student, but also making our goals attainable and then coming up with supports for students to reach those goals. I appreciate the fact that my staff have all worked on orientation videos as well as I asked for a syllabus that would go to parents and students so students understood what to expect. And parents understood what to expect for each course as far as how things are graded, because they moved from the elementary to middle. And for some, that's a shock. And we are going into a lot of detail tomorrow during the sixth grade orientation, which will be a Zoom webinar. And it features all of the sixth grade teachers as well as the extra staff who will be available to sixth graders. And we'll be recording that so that families who can't log in during that will be able to still access it when they have, when they're home from work or have computer access. So just trying to send information out to families and kids and trying to make that consistent schoolwide so that kids can be ready for middle school.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving right along, Jenny.
Hey.
How are you doing?
Good, thanks. Hey, good evening and good night, everybody. So yeah, all of those things that Amy and Julie said, we're working towards the same things at the high school with the Acelis. Teachers have done a great job of just diving in and identifying the ways they can use that with their students. And with Google Classrooms, getting those set up, we too are doing student orientation videos. The teachers are for each of their classes, just to kind of introduce themselves in the class, the expectations. And what students need to be doing, introducing their syllabi, that sort of thing. We did create kind of a syllabus template that we expect teachers to use and to have very similar things in it so that students have that alignment between courses and teachers and families can expect that as well. And the, the distance learning playbook has been great. Not only is it good information, but the way that he's delivering it and presenting it, he is modeling so many examples of, of things that you can do for engagement in your online classroom. But I think all of our teachers are going to walk away with some great tools. We, we had a staff meeting in regards to it last week after our first one. And it was a really engaging staff meeting with everybody just taking some great ideas away. And so I'm excited for them to have that, that tool to be able to use as school starts. And you know, for a lot of our teachers, it's not new stuff, which is good, because sometimes it's hard to learn to ride a new bicycle, you know, down the same path, but we're not. We're riding the, the same bicycle down a new path. It's stuff we already know and they're just being able to apply it in this new learning environment. So that is, is great. And because we're doing that district-wide, teachers will be able to collaborate district-wide as well. So I look forward to, to seeing some of those things come into the classroom. So yeah, Zoom, Acelis, Google Classroom is being used at the high school. Our EAs were in again today is the first day and they have begun to identify how they're going to support teachers, students, where we're going to use them for that extra support. And you know, just in case the, the smoke is still not great on Saturday, I'm going to knock on wood that it's going to be gone. I kind of sent just out a quick poll to our teachers, hey, who's available to be late on Monday? So we have an evening session to hand out Chromebooks if necessary. And I was just super excited with the amount of response. I, I'm here, I'll be here, whatever we need to do, let's get this stuff out to kids. So that was awesome and encouraging.
Great. Oh, super. Any questions or comments? Well, thank you very, very much. So Amy, are you going to talk to us a little bit about suicide prevention? Is that?
I can. I can talk a little bit about the progression of where we are. Would, is this a good time?
If you could, just give us a, a highlight of what's going on with all that.
Yeah, so I guess for lack of better words, we could say one of the highlights of COVID this spring would be that we had some opportunities for our team to gather and, and create what we called our, our crisis team. And with that team, we had a lot of little sub, subcategories that we worked on, one being the suicide prevention and response. In amidst, we had a multitude of others. So we're looking at different crisis response, our four in one drills. I know I'm forgetting some of these and Joel, feel free to step in if you'd like to. But we had input from our building administrators, we had our counselors on board. We had some of our specialists, our support staff, Don Maurice and Catherine, who I've mentioned already tonight. But getting input from those, from that committee, we started as a whole. And then we divided that up into subcommittees that went out and they gathered resources. Our counselors had already been to one of the opportunities provided through 4J Lan SD that, that, that really helped look at kind of the, the whole picture of crisis response. This last week, I met with, with one of those representatives who is out of 4J, Sherry Hoyland, who we are looking to partner with in terms of some of the, the supports that they have around suicide prevention and crisis response. In addition, Mike has been super helpful in terms of getting us set up with some of the latest research and responses that other neighboring districts are using in terms of suicide prevention. We're finding that there's a lot of question marks around what's best practice and what, what instruments are out there to help support that. But we're definitely in that process of researching. I will say that at this point forward, we'll continue to move with that crisis response team slash care team. And so looking at the ways that we can support as we jump into comprehensive distance learning, our families in a multitude of, of platforms and, and support services in terms of care. But also as we look at crisis response in terms of if we have, in fact, we had last spring some, some, some issues that, that we had to really wrap our, our services around with those families and students that were pretty significant. And so having a system in place that we, and a, and a process for how we process those emergency responses is an important avenue, whether we're in distance learning or in person. And so the team is going to continue that work and move forward. Please let me know if you have questions on that.
Any questions out there?
In addition to that, with the, what we've been working on K twelve and Amy's been leading the work on this, a social emotional learning and the best prevention for suicide or any crisis of that matter is, is being able to connect with kids and them feel supported at an emotional level by their staff, by our staff, by their teachers. And so that work is going to be woven into the curriculum so that those are embedded in lessons. What Amy or Julie was talking about earlier about homeroom or advisory and being able to have those connections with students every day in that class. To be able to talk with them, to see how they're doing, what they're feeling, you know, to, to just be able to identify that. But also to connect with those students so that they know they have an adult in school that's, that's looking for them every day. That's going to be supporting them every day and is going to be there for them when they need them every day. So a lot of the suicide prevention stuff is wrapped around or woven into the social emotional learning and care.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to weigh in. Thanks so much, Amy. I wish Ashley were online with us. I know this is something that's been near and dear to her since she came on the board. And I think this, this is very, this is awesome. And thanks for the, thanks for the hard work.
Good. I'm excited to move forward with it.
She's been hard, been working hard on this. The whole team has, but Amy is an excellent leader for it. One thing that I would also like to add is that one of the thing, one of the components that was really appealing with Acelis was that they have a social emotional learning curriculum embedded in Acelis. So where we didn't have some things or how we can check to see if we're on point with standards around social emotional learning, we can always look to that curriculum that's being provided by Acelis. That's a new tool, so for us.
If no other questions or comments, Mike, you're on.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, that's a tough act to follow when you're getting behind those administrators. What they're doing. I'll tell you what, they've got their handful and I, I couldn't be prouder or more confident in a, in a leadership team than I am in this one. I can tell you, it's absolutely the best that I've been a part of. Well, and speaking of team stuff, last, last month, we hosted, I hosted the Presswell School District Community Forum. And my panel was this district leadership team, the A team. And in that forum, presented the reopening schools blueprint for the community. And then we fielded questions as a team, district-wide. That was such a, a big event. I mean, you know, I was looking for what we were going to follow up with that as far as continuing that communication with the community. And the principals, before I could. And the principals before I could, we even had a discussion about it and already proposed having their own community forums for their schools. So I was like, holy cow, there you go. And off they went and uh, you know, they, they, I, I attended each one of them just to be there as a, a support person or on the panel and they completely had the situation in hand with each of those community forums and uh and facilitating those questions and, and doing as much as they could uh to inform parents of what this was going to be like and of the different programs that we were providing. Um, did we know everything at the time? Uh-uh. No, but we found out things that we didn't know and we, from the feedback that we were getting from parents and community members and staff through those forums and we've been able to respond to those uh questions, those needs and those aha things that we really didn't have. And we're going to continue to do that to get feedback from our community and from our staff. Uh, thank you Candace and David for setting up the Wi-Fi Assistance Program. That, that's really going to be helpful to us and it's going to help the community a lot. Uh, I'm looking forward to that, to be able to say, hey, we have help for you and we can do this. And uh so thank you for that. And, and again, both of you for the, the CDL grants. Our staff does have needs, immediate needs. And I noticed that you had a quick turnaround on that to address the immediate needs that our principals and teachers have right now. And I appreciate that. And also the flexibility extending the window. We're, we're going to really need to, to turn, we got to have to pivot somewhere to look for some help. And uh, and right directly in the classroom, that gives them some, some needed support. Uh, and they're going to feel that when that email went out today, today. You know, that, that's the message is, you know, we're here as a community to support you in the classroom and that, that feels good to them. I know it does. A little piece about the academy, you know, we brought the academy in and, and the principals, they, they didn't mention this in all their activities, but every parent that requested to transfer their kid out of this district, they got a contact from the principal to find out why and what we could do to help them in district. And several of those families changed their direction to stay in the district. And so we have about a hundred families now that are in the academy. And we'll start working with those families because what we're going to be offering on CDL with teacher contact every day and support from teachers throughout uh the week is going to be something that those parents didn't experience last spring. And so when that gets out into the community, it's, they're going to know that there is that support there from teachers to student versus what's in the academy where parents are going to be providing that support for their students. That, that's their choices to be independent within the academy. So um, I, 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 there's going to be a, a trend that develops after the first couple of weeks of school and that's going to be parents reversing and wanting to get back into schools and in CDL. So principals are ready to get those schedules going again. I'm sure they're happy about that. I know they're excited. Um, so I want to thank the principals, but I want you to know that was a lot of hours of contacting parents because there were a lot of parents that were ready to exit the district. Across the state, 30% on the average enrollment decreases in public school districts. Because they're going to homeschool or charter school. 30% is devastating. Right now, we're holding at about 5%. But what's been happening over the last week is we've been getting more transfer requests coming into the district. So we're already seeing a reverse in that trend. One other thing that's going to help with this is that we as a leadership team, I have determined that, that we have a, a large sector of parents out there that, that work during the day. Both parents and/or single parent homes where that parent, that single parent is working all day long. While their kids are expected to attend school during the day. While their kids are in childcare or while their kids are in neighborhood hubs or whatever it is. Well, those parents are missing the opportunity to partner with their kids in this endeavor and with us at the school level. So we're looking at having a night school support program where we have teachers that will be there at night in the evenings for two hours so that students can get in online with the teachers in the evenings for tutoring. And parents can help get some guidance on how to navigate the online systems that we have. So that's something that we're working on that uh we're planning to launch out here uh the second week of school or right thereabouts. So that parents can come home from work, feed their kids and get online and know what it's like to navigate the system to support their student, their, their children to do that. And then also get some help with math. So that's, that's the big thing out there is how in the world am I going to teach my kid math at home online? Well, we're going to get math teachers to help do that um at the elementary and secondary level. At the elementary level, it's a lot of language art stuff, reading, assistance, but as we get into the secondary level, it's a lot more math. Math is very complicated as we get into the secondary. So we know this and we're going to be um prepared to support that for CDL. That again is going to bring more parents back into the district because that's something that is very unique. In fact, I only know that, that we're going, we're the district that's going to provide that. So that's going to be unique uh to, to Cresswell. Um, and then, you know, the crisis, this pandemic has really had an economic impact in our community. We were at 52% poverty before the, the pandemic. And people have lost jobs or I don't know. I mean, you know, it's just, there's, there's an economic impact, but there's also this thing about insecurity out there with both our parents and our kids. And so as a school district, we want to have a presence with our families. So we're coming into the night school situation to have that evening presence to support our parents and kids. But then we're also looking at what we can do to deliver meals an extra day a week on Saturdays. So um you know, those families, we, we do deliver meals on Fridays and try to carry it over to Saturday. But if we were able to add a Saturday and help support them through the weekend, uh I know it would be, it would, it would, it would mean a lot to a lot of households. So uh Joel and Donna and uh Sarah and I are looking at that to see what we can do with that situation to be able to reach out and, and really provide much-needed support out there. One meal, two meals a day or a weekend covered is a lot for a family that has three kids that doesn't have the money to be able to support them or a homeless family that's out there that has no place to go and, and they really can't even cook their meals in some of these situations. So the better they are when their tummies are full, uh, they can think about schoolwork. When their tummies are full and we're bringing them the food, they think about school and school will always have a special meaning to them. So that's the end of my report. There, you saw the other activities in there, but um, but that's my thinking.
Any questions for Mike? Comments?
Mike, I'd just like to um let you know if you're not aware or um reach out on behalf of the Caring for Cresswell Kids Program or the Food for Kids Program because we get food to kiddos. Um, over the weekend, we deliver, you know, Friday night or if there's no school on Friday, we've typically delivered on Thursday for the weekends. So if you want some background information on how many families um that we're getting food to, to help with your Saturday delivery, um, then we'll be able to better coordinate what gap is left. Um, so we, we can get you information on how many kiddos we've been trying to help feed over the past few years, if you want that.
Yep, we will. We'll take it.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
That'd be great. Any other questions or comments? See you and then uh moving right along. If anybody has any uh requests on something for the board to discuss, please let us know. Uh, don't be bashful. Uh, and the only other thing is our next meeting is October uh 14th. And if there's no other questions or comments, we're done. Thank you all for coming in. Thank you for what you do. You guys are, it's just amazing with these kind of conditions and, and what you guys are doing. It's, I just can't believe it. It's great. We'll see y'all next time.
Bye. Bye. Thank you, everyone. Bye.